How we doing Mayor?
I'm good, not bad at all. I have a two day, I gotta go to dentist's pharmacy at eight forty-five.
It's no good.
I'm fine. So, uh, my son finished up his first semester. How's he working though? He loves it, he's a better girl. First time he's gone. They bought him a bike before. And, uh, he just had his first fatigue, they call it. Good. Yeah. Friggin'.
Mayor. Do you have, the guys that come in today?
No.
What are we?
How are you?
About additional police under my report. Art, did your family get home okay? Good.
You're scousing.
Oh, you're scousing.
Is there?
I was only busting your chops.
So you worked. That was, were you having me convinced?
No, I, he knew he had to come.
Well, I, one, two, three.
We don't need them. Her, him or her.
Listen, somebody steal the car out of your driveway, we're gonna make you wait thirty minutes for.
Doesn't matter to me. School. We have cameras in the city.
Unless you have one of them front cars that can make a stop it. Where is that? I must just put a stop on that car. I call it a kid car. Yeah, mass. Mass empty day.
A call to say, a call to say to session and city council to order. Please rise for any vacation fellow by pledging a flag. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday this week, let us begin our meeting by giving thanks for all the good brought to our city. In the spirit of the peace candle which will be lit on Saturday night, let us also ask for peace throughout the world. We also ask to thank you for the ironworkers, union workers who put the candle up without injury. During this meeting, we'll discuss many things and many, make many decisions, but we never want to lose sight of our gratefulness to the heavenly father. Thank you for your faithfulness and provision in our lives. Thank you for each person in this meeting and the unique talents and perspectives they bring. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together and work towards a common goal, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I mean, I say to America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, madam clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Eddinger?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Pinnabone?
Uh, here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Ms. Sultana?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
President.
Uh, at this time, we have the approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve.
Moved?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussions, additions or deletions? Roll call, madam clerk.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone? Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
At this time, we have our action or minutes of our November twelfth meeting.
With the proof.
Moved in sec- and moved, moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, madam clerk.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
At this time, we're gonna have a presentation to the city council, uh, by PFM, who is going to present on the stamp program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Gordon Mann, I'm from, uh, public financial management, PFM, uh, not a creative title, but it is a descriptive one, we do exactly what our title says. Uh, I'm joined by my colleague here, Lion, Lauren Sokovich. Uh, we're very glad to meet, well, some, a lot of you, we've met already, but meet you, uh, in person in a public setting. Uh, lots of acronyms here early on, we are here from what's called the Strategic Management Planning Program, or the STAMP Plan. Uh, you may recall, it was probably late last year that the city, uh, applied for a grant to the Commonwealth. Another acronym, DCD, the Department of Community and Economic Development, one of the cabinet, uh, departments under the governor, uh, that helps local governments. We were hired to create what's called a five-year plan, a multi-year plan. You guys are working your way very diligently through the budget process. That's revenues and expenses in support of policy and strategy over a year. The five-year plan is that same principle, it's just over five years instead, uh, and it will have a lot more words than, uh, than the, than the regular budget will. Uh, the STAMP Plan breaks down into three phases, and we are here to present on the first phase tonight. So the first phase is financial, it's right in our wheelhouse, and, you know, we've handed out the report, you'll have a chance to go through it at your leisure, we'll hit the highlights for you. Uh, and then we can, you know, address conversations either in this room or, uh, you know, over the, over the coming months. And what this is, is this is the evaluation of the city's financial condition. You could think of this as going to the doctor, and he puts you on the scale, and he tests your blood pressure, and he looks at how you're doing right now, right? So what we're going to present tonight, and, and the punchline to get all the way to the end is, Easton is actually doing relative to its peers, well. Uh, we do this around the state, I was in Williamsport not too long ago, uh, we've done this in Allentown, York, Wilkes-Barre, Erie, uh, Pittsburgh, lots of different places, Redding. Uh, over the years, and by comparison, Easton is in a good place. It doesn't mean there aren't challenges, it doesn't mean there aren't opportunities, it doesn't mean there aren't things to manage, but relative to your peers, including those in the Lehigh Valley, you're doing pretty well. We're gonna talk about what that means here tonight, in the terms of the financial analysis. The second part of this, and where a lot of you have already met us in some fashion, is the review of departmental operations. This is very numbers-heavy, this is the review of your revenues and your expenses, but it only tells us part of your story, right? Your, your city government is not an accounting document, it's not a budget, it's what you see out the window, it's people, places, and things, and services. And we've had conversations with folks, and we'll continue to do so. Uh, then the third part of it, I think the part that folks will probably be most eager to hear is, okay, so now what do we do about it? You've told us what our numbers are, you told us what our services are, we've had conversations with some of you on council about your opportunities and challenges are. Then we come back to you with a series of ideas, some of which you'll like, hopefully motion which you'll like, some of which you mo- you may not. Uh, and it'll be a five-year plan that says, over the next five years, we think these are the priorities, and this is how you ought to pursue them. So again, this, tonight, is the first side, uh, the, the first of three. It's, it's kind of a, a little bit of an awkward hockey analogy here. We're past the first period intermission, because we're also almost done with the second phase, so you're sort of getting the, the, the report at the end of one period closer to the end of the second. Um, and then our next one would be when we would come back, uh, early next year to talk about recommendations. But let's talk first about how you're doing, which, how your financial picture looks, uh, and what your risks and opportunities are, probably a timely conversation, given the amount of time you're spending on your budget right now. And since Lauren Sokovich, my colleague, has done almost all of the work, I'm gonna let her do the presentation.
Thank you. So, um, as, as Gordon mentioned, really what we found when we did the financial analysis is that there are a lot of strengths to Easton's financial position. There are a couple of risks, um, and I'll highlight those, and, and we'll talk about them later on. Um, but the, the first thing that we found for the city is that you're in a relatively strong place financially. What we find in a lot of places, particularly third-class cities that are heavily reliant on the real estate tax, is your real estate tax revenue stays pretty flat. But as you know, from your own finances, your expenses grow every year due to inflation, due to wage increases, other kinds of inflationary factors that are not necessarily within your control. And so you always have to play catch-up and increase your tax rates. The city has not increased its tax rates in over a decade, and what we found is, in the last couple of years, you've had, um, positive operating balances in, in your audits, meaning you ended the year with slightly more revenue or enough revenue that you needed to cover your expenditures. Um, the other thing that, that we found in the beginning of our analysis is when we looked at your, um, your S and P report, your credit rating report, is that they, they found that you were also in, in a strong place financially. Um, there were a couple of risks that were highlighted, both in the, in the audit and in that S and P report that we'll dig into, one is concerning, um, your debt, the levels of debt that the city has. Um, the other is concerning the, the fund that you use to fund your health insurance, but overall, we found that, um, you're in a strong place financially. This analysis is really going to answer kind of three main questions, the first is, are the city's recurring revenues sufficient to cover recurring expenditures? Uh, the second is, are there projected deficits or surpluses? We'll talk about what's called a baseline financial projection, that's kind of the main tool that we use to evaluate your finances. Um, and if we do find that there are deficits, what are kind of the main revenue and expenditure trends that are driving that financial picture? Um, if you are following along in the, in the chapter, there is a page that kind of details the, uh, your revenue and expenditures, um, historically over the past. We looked at four years, we're excluding COVID, because there was a couple of funky things, as everybody knows, from that time, revenue behaved differently, expenditures behaved differently, so we sort of excluded that year, even though we did analyze it for our purposes. And historically, we find that, um, the city's revenue grew at an annual rate of around three point four percent, and that was really driven by growth in the earned income tax. If you look at the, the earned income tax line, um, that grew by eight point one percent on an average annual basis, which is, which is really strong. On the expenditure side, expenditures grew a little bit faster than revenues, and most of that is really driven by personnel costs. You'll see this when we get to the expenditure section, but most of your costs are personnel, and we found that those costs, um, particularly health insurance costs, projecting out, are really the, the main driver in the baseline. If you flip to, to the following page, um, you'll see a chart that shows what your baseline financial projection looks like, and I'll just address the little red numbers up front, um, because that's something that probably stands out. We do see, when we project in a baseline scenario, and I'll talk in a second about what that means, we see some, uh, manageable but existent deficits. So there's a small deficit of, of one point five million dollars in the first year that we do this projection, and then when we go a couple of years out, that grows by a little bit each year. What is the baseline projection, and what does this really tell us? Well, the first kind of principle, and we'll, we'll talk about specifically what's baked into this chart, but the first principle to know is that this is a status quo scenario. So in, in Gordon's analogy about going to the doctor, this is, what is the city's financial condition today? So it's taking all of the conditions, we are using the proposed budget from twenty twenty-six as a starting point, but it takes everything from today, it just projects it out. So current tax rates, current tax base, um, current staffing levels, current collective bargaining agreements, everything that exists today that is within the city's control, we sort of just take that and project it out for the next five years. This kind of leads to the second principle, which is that it's, it's not necessarily a prediction of what we think is going to happen, because as you know, everything changes from year to year, you have, uh, new information about your tax base. Um, things grow faster, slower than you anticipate, and you have to adjust during your budget process. So it's not a, a prediction of what's going to happen, it really is that diagnosis of what are the things, the, the risks or the challenges that we think you may encounter in the next couple of years? And how can we sort of proactively address those going forward? Um, so again, drawing your attention to the, the chart that shows the deficits, the, the deficits are, uh, relatively small compared to the city's taxation ability, its reserve levels, um, and it's, um, the, the fact that you guys have, um, a, a manageable amount of revenue that's been growing every year, um, but it is existent, so we will talk about the, the risks that, that are baked in there. On the revenue side, um, the first revenue that we analyzed was the real estate tax, it's your second largest revenue source. Um, and we looked at what are the, kind of the, happening with the three component pieces of your real estate tax. And the three pieces of the real estate tax are really your tax rate, your tax base, um, and the collection rate. The collection rate meaning, the, what amount of tax is owed in that year are you collecting, what percentage? Um, again, when we talked about your tax rate, you haven't raised taxes, meaning the, the bottom line, um, tax rate number, that mileage number, has not gone up in the last more than a decade. Um, but what we did find is that the split of where that money goes, where that mileage rate goes, has changed. Um, so the, the first kind of finding, um, from our analysis on the real estate tax is, yes, that the pot of money that you have for real estate tax is coming in the door, has gone up a little bit over the past couple of years. The dollar amount and the mileage rate that you have, to, that goes towards your general operating, meaning your police, your fire, paving roads, kind of your core services, has actually gone down a little bit, as you put more money towards debt and towards recreation. Um, I'll just say, one piece about the collection rate, the collection rate, um, we are anticipating in our projection that it will remain stable, we're assuming around ninety-five percent, and that's kind of where your results have been coming in over the last couple of years. Um, those of you that are looking at the table on page five, um, you'll see that twenty twenty-four preliminary results look a little bit higher, um, that's because they're preliminary, we expect that that will come down a little bit. The last piece that we wanted to kind of highlight a trend is in, in the tax base. So the tax base is the, the taxable assessed value of property within the city of Easton. Um, so what, what has the trend been doing? Um, we have found that there's been a little bit of growth in, um, the tax base. And specifically, we've seen growth that's been driven by properties that are under LERTA. So those properties, or, um, improvements on properties that are, have been exempt from taxes over the past, I think it's ten years, you have the, the abatement. Um, those are starting to re-enter, or to enter the tax rolls, and is driving the growth in the taxable assessed value, as you'll see on, there's a table on page six. So just to kind of highlight our, our main findings from, from the real estate tax analysis, the base is really driven by those LERTA properties, although there is a little bit of growth outside of that. The rate has maintained the same on the bottom line, but the amount that you have that's going towards those core services has gone down. Going forward, we're really kind of, like I said, taking those, what we know today, and projecting it forward. So beyond kind of that solid, um, non-LERTA assessed value, we do assume a little bit of additional LERTA properties, the ones we know of today, entering the tax rolls over the next couple of years. Um, so that's where you get that little bit of growth in the, in the real estate tax, um, but we anticipate that it's relatively stable, a little bit of growth over the next five years. Uh, flipping to the earned income tax, I'm, uh, looking at, there's a, a chart on page seven, trying to keep some references to folks that are following along. Um, the earned income tax is really the, the engine of your revenue growth over the past five years, as you'll see. Um, you, we show that since twenty twenty-one, that, uh, revenue has grown at an, an average annual, uh, rate of eight point one percent, which is really strong. It's the number one revenue source you have in the city, and again, because you haven't raised taxes, that growth is really coming from growth in the tax base. There's two pieces, um, of the, the tax levy that you currently have, one is called Act five eleven taxes, um, and it's that one percent that you split with the school district. And then the other piece is the piece that you can levy, in addition to that, that is, um, because you're a homeoral city. So it's an, an additional amount that you, that you levy on residents, and starting this year, um, you stopped levying that on non-residents. That was worth about two million dollars. So like I said, you've had really strong growth in the earned income tax, um, driven by the tax base, and really, where does that come from? So we looked at some census and some employment data, to really kind of dig into what is, what is the driver of that growth? And we found two things. One is that you have had a little bit of growth in the number of employed people in the city, this is mostly since twenty twenty, there was a little bit of, of a dip, um, in twenty twenty at the outset of the pandemic, and then since then, there's been a little bit of growth around one percent every year in the number of people employed that live in the city of Easton. But really, the driver of that earned income tax growth has been their wages. So if you look at, there's a, a table on page eight, that's sort of, you can see side by side the comparison of number of people who are employed and their, their earnings. And, um, you can see that the median household income and the median earnings are two different ways to measure income that the census uses, those have grown at four point nine and eight percent, respectively, over the last couple of years. So what do we assume in the future, again, going back to that baseline projection that we're using as our diagnostic tool to sort of check up on the city's finances? Um, we assume some amount of growth going forward, we don't want to continue to assume, you know, double-digit year-over-year growth and be, you know, overly presumptuous with our projection. But we also don't want to be overly pessimistic and say, oh, you'll probably freeze where you are. So we continue to, to grow the core of your real, or your earned income tax base at around five percent. Beyond that, and I think everybody who's driven into the city recently will notice that there's a lot of construction going on, on either side of this building, there's huge apartment buildings that are going up or have gone up. So we do build in a little bit of an additional growth, just in twenty twenty-seven to account for the fact that, like I said, more residents of potentially higher incomes coming into the city and growing that base. Um, moving on to kind of the other major revenues, so your real estate tax and your earned income tax are really the, the main engines of, of growth, but we also want to acknowledge you have a couple of other major revenues, again, that are sort of tied to the economic developments that this city in this region has seen. Um, one of those things is, um, parking revenue, which the city collects on parking spaces that it both owns and rents across the city. Um, gaming revenue, which is, um, the host fee payments that you receive from the nearby casino, and then there's also licenses, permits, and fees. And the trend that we have really seen on this revenue is, again, a lot of growth over the past couple of years. And this is a place where we're, we are conservative with our projection, because it is tied to something that is sort of outside, relatively outside of the city's control, which is the regional and local economy. Um, we, we wanted to be judicious about the amount of revenue that we're projecting that, that this grows, so we don't project a lot of growth over the next couple of years. If you look at the chart on the bottom of page eleven, you'll see that it's kind of flat over the next couple of years. And again, this kind of goes back to the, the methodology of the baseline, we want to bake in things that we know exist today, but we don't want to assume, oh, the, the, the casino is going to continue to expand. If those things do happen, then our, our projection, you'll outperform the projection, basically. Flipping to the expenditure side, um, you'll see on page twelve, the breakdown of, it says general fund, but really, this is the combination of the general recreation and debt fund all combined, um, the expenditures that come out of that, um, those three funds that we're really calling the, sort of, operating funds of the city. And anything that's in that, a blue slice is personnel costs, you can see that it's more than half of your expenditures are all tied to personnel. Um, and the thing to also highlight about the city's personnel is that most of your employees are, um, governed by collective bargaining, which means a lot of these things, cash compensation, pension, health insurance, other personnel costs are mostly tied to collective bargaining agreements and the collective bargaining cycle. Uh, flipping to page thirteen, there's another chart that kind of shows the historical and, and projected growth of cash compensation. Cash compensation is not just the largest piece of, uh, of the pie, if you will, I'm looking at the previous page, it's also one of the largest drivers of growth on a dollar basis over the next five years. It drives around a third of the projected growth in expenditures, um, across those three funds in the next five years. The next biggest piece, and this is a significant one, and, and one that we think is crucial to the story of the financial risks, um, is health insurance. So when we looked at the health insurance, um, and on, uh, in, for the city of Easton, what we found is that you're self-insured, which means that you pay for the cost of claims instead of a premium, and you also use what's called an internal service fund, which basically means instead of paying for a premium, you put money into a separate fund every year, and then the, the cost of the claims gets paid out of that fund. When we looked at the, the audit detail of that fund, um, we found that the expenditures that were getting paid out of that fund, meaning that your claims costs were growing really rapidly. The, the two years that we looked at, or the, the four years that we looked at, they, uh, showed, uh, thirteen percent growth year-over-year, um, on average of claims cost growth, which is, which is really high. Um, we also found it, and this is corroborated by, uh, conversations with city staff, which is that you've changed brokers recently, and, and the broker that you have now is giving a much better costing of what it actually means to, um, provide healthcare at this level to your employees. And so you'll see, when you flip to the chart on page fourteen, what happens is, you have contributions into that, um, health insurance fund that are relatively flat for a couple of years. And then once the, you have had better information from your broker, you've remedied this in your budgeting practices, and you've increased, um, in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six in a big way, the contribution that you're budgeting to go into that ISF. Going forward, we also don't want to, you know, repeat the mistakes of the past and say, we're gonna keep that amount flat, um, so we continue to grow the contributions by seven point nine percent, which is about in line with what we think your, your claims cost growth is going to be, although, um, it's been a, a little bit quicker than that, uh, in the past couple of years. And the next major piece of personnel costs is your pensions, this is the contributions that you make into your three pension funds, um, that you're required to do, it's called the minimum, uh, municipal obligation. Over the last couple of years, so looking at the historic period twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four, that amount has actually grown a lot, but what we found is, in, um, the twenty twenty-five budget, based on the information that you receive from your actuary, that that amount actually dropped pretty significantly. And again, in the proposed budget, it's, it's, uh, expected to maintain at that lower level. And then finally, operating costs, um, the, we basically take all of your operating costs and grow them by some inflationary factor, again, assuming that even though you are going to buy the same number of pencils in a baseline scenario, have the same number of contracts, that the cost of those pencils and those contracts is going to inflate, um, by some amount every year. So we use, um, CPI in some cases, although you'll find for utilities, we use a specific growth rate that is based on energy costs. Oh, sure, sure, sorry, I talked fast. Um, the, the next piece that we want to talk about is debt. Um, like we said, this is a big, uh, piece of the story for our city finances. Um, the table that you, or the chart that you see on page fif- on page sixteen, uh, is the city's current debt schedule, which goes out to twenty forty. Um, we found that the city is budgeted to spend almost ten percent of its operating budget on debt in twenty twenty-six, and, um, that relatively high level of debt, uh, starting in twenty twenty-six is expected to continue basically at that level until twenty thirty-six, so that's over the next ten years, and then there's a little bit of a drop. Again, just to kind of highlight what this means in a baseline scenario, this doesn't anticipate that you take on anything new, this is just existing debt that you have today. Sure, yeah. Um, so what does this kind of mean for management? It, it really gives you a lot less flexibility to, to kind of respond to, um, economic shortfalls, uh, risk or, or other shocks that you don't anticipate from year to year, or to take on additional debt if you need to for another project. Um, and then the last piece, which-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can you repeat the last, just that whole stuff, what you just said, repeat that again, please?
About the, about the debt?
Yes.
It does, it gives you a little bit less flexibility if you need to respond to something in this year, because you do have this, this debt service, which, what we show from your debt schedule is expected to kind of maintain at that level. So, um, the next section i- is about the utility function, which, um, right now is, is sort of intermingled into your general fund, although we know that there's some efforts to start segregating those things into separate potentially enterprise funds. Um, and really, the story with those is that, particularly what we found, um, on your solid waste, is when you have increases in costs, you also do incremental incre- you also do incremental increases in the fee rates. So recently, you had a new contract for your trash hauler that that increased the the cost of that contract pretty significantly. So you spread a fee increase across a couple of years to pass it on to customers, which basically what that means is that you are not dipping into your general operating fund and using money that comes from your own income tax or other places that that goes to fund, like I said, police, fire streets to pay for to pay for trash collection. You're really using the the money that comes from the the trash fee to pay for trash collection. So taking this all together, and this is a lot of numbers, a lot of things, like I I've been told I talk very quickly. The story for Easton's finances is that you have had really robust revenue growth over the last couple of years. A lot of that has been driven by economic activity. You haven't had to raise taxes in order to get to this place of financial stability, which is really positive. The reason we want to highlight those risks is that you're at this place of being able to act proactively over the next five or 10 years and put yourself in a place of stability, anticipate risks like health insurance, like debt, things that are a little bit longer term, so that you don't need to eventually one year say, oh, no, we haven't increased taxes. We need to do a big increase. You can sort of respond to things with a lot of time left. So that's that's the presentation that I have. And then we can take questions if there is time, which I think there's a couple of minutes.
I I think, well, you, is it correct, you'll be here two more times to present? Is that what you said? Okay. Just a request, if we could have some of this put up on the screen so that people could, our residents could see it. And could we get this assessment out on the website?
We're trying to prevent a period of of long-term silence. So we're giving you an update, all right? This is not a completed, this is not a complete report. It's not the final report.
So once we have the final report.
It will be published.
Okay, but I still think it would be helpful for any future meetings to have this up up on the screen because some of the tables should be shared with the public. And just for conversation purposes.
So correct me if I'm wrong, you're halfway, you're more than halfway through this.
A little more than halfway.
Yeah.
Yes, that's a fair way to, that's a fair way to describe it, yes.
We're through, what we are through is the evaluation part, both the numbers and the managerial evaluation. So that's where we are.
Okay.
I I know we gave you a lot. Let me give you six words to think about, right? Trying to distill this all the way down. For the first two are good start. You are in, for your peers, a really healthy position. And it's not just, you know, of course, you're paying PFM, they're going to say, tell you what you want. We're actually pretty well known for telling people what they don't like to hear. But a a report from the credit rating agency, who does not care what you think or feel at all, describes the city's financial position as healthy with strong reserves and a liquidity position, right? You've been able to to grow, you famously have not had a real estate tax increase in 16 years, 19 years. And, you know, as someone who grew up in the Lehigh Valley, I can speak to how Easton has changed. I grew up on Linden Street in Bethlehem. And when I was a little kid, Easton was just not a place you came, right? It was, that was its reputation for a variety of reasons. And now I have a cousin who's paying probably way more than he can afford to live in one of these apartments because Easton is exactly where you want to be. So there is a turnaround story here that's obvious, right? That's that's the first part of this. The second part of this is the first two words. The second two words are grow fast. You are. That's what separates Easton from Lancaster, Allentown to a degree, Bethlehem, Wilkes-Barre, Williamsport. It's the tube, it's the buildings that you see around you. It's those big projects. If you look at your real estate tax base that is not those big buildings, it's doing what everybody, everything, everywhere else in the Commonwealth is just doing, just not much of anything. Its growth is 0.2% a year, which is a different way of saying not growing at all, right? All of your real estate tax growth is in these large, big projects. You get three benefits from those projects. You get the permits. When they sign up, you get that burst of initial revenue. You get the earned income tax, which has taken your revenues to growth of like eight to 9%. Raise your hand if you're getting 9% annual wage increases, right? Probably not. What that is, is that's a different, it's it's a different population moving in here that has higher income that is pushing your income tax up. Yeah, you have a little bit of natural growth. Yeah, you're getting a little more people who live here and work somewhere, but it's really the introduction of a different type of population. And then the third part, which doesn't happen right away, but does happen over time, is the real estate tax. The way your abatement system works is you get 100% abatement the first year, then 90, then 80, then 70, then 60. And you look at that, you go, 10 years, I got to pay my real estate taxes every year. What's up with that? But you're actually are far enough into the process now, we are starting to see those things roll onto the tax base. So you are growing fast. Here's the risky part of that. Their last two words, so good position, grow fast, spend fast. And you are, you're spending fast. There are two ways that you can increase your spending. One is by doing lots of new things. We're going to hire 20 new cops and 30 new firefighters and build four new fire stations. And you're not doing that. And that's part of the reason that your position is is stronger than it would be if you were just adding everything that everybody wanted all the time. But what you are doing is investing in what you have. Some of that is your, some of that is your employees through health insurance, through wage increases. Some of that is your equipment. Some of that is your facilities. You are investing in what you have, and that's fine, and that's good. You are not here to run up a giant bank balance and just to sit on it like a hedge fund or something. You have this growth, you should be using it to do something. Here's the question that we'll wrestle with in the second half of this, you want to think about it that way. What happens when the growth slows? Because it could grow slow for a number of reasons that you can't control, right? It could slow because of tariffs. It could slow because people, because of migration patterns, it could slow because of whatever. You are taking advantage of and capitalizing on the opportunity you have. You deserve all the credit for that. But we have to be careful because you don't control the universe. And at some point, that opportunity could disappear, right? That right now, you have this robust real estate market, but there's no guarantee it continues forever. Your borders are bound. Eventually, you will run out of places to build things, right? And you can only build up so many times. So the question is, how do you want to think about that? How do you want to create the flexibility so that when the revenue growth stops, when the last marquee or commodore, whatever it is, goes up and there's no more for a while, you don't want to be in a position where your debt's so high and your salaries are so high and you're spending on the health insurance, that it's like driving a car 85 miles an hour on the on the highway and then slamming on the brakes to stop, right? You are better off decelerating and thinking about getting to where you want to go at a more regular pace than you are going, I'm just going to keep going and close my eyes and hope it never ends.
Jump, I'm going to jump in real quick. And Gordon, thank you guys, thank you for the analysis. I want to make just a couple of comments on that. And then they may have additional questions. I'm sure it's soaking in. You have a way to quieten the room. So like, I want to say just a couple of things. Number one is that the the study that's occurring right now really assisted in the formulation of the budget this year. Because we had an opportunity to have a second group look at the numbers. And then at one point, we actually looked at the 26 numbers together. We looked at what our assumptions were there and how their analysis came out. So that was a a positive aspect of of working with PFM this year. We actually, you know, it it grew the team, then more than just Mark and I and and a few others and yourselves looking at the at the data. So that was positive this year. The second thing is that I do want to mention and remind everyone that since I've been here, and it's also in the charter, we've ran a forecast budget every year. We're going to submit that to council. It could be anywhere from, I doubt December, because we're going to be busy finishing up this budget. But January at the latest, February, we'll submit a two-year budget, meaning we'll submit a, we'll run a, we'll run a budget for 27, a higher level, not as in-depth.
So two-year forecast?
We'll do our two-year, our two-year forecast. And in in the last 10 years, we've always held some sort of baseline and not to do a a a lot of analysis and not 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 provide a a ton of, we'll be a little bit more conservative because typically, we're looking at numbers from previous years, but we always expect some sort of dip. We also have seen in the last 10 years, anywhere between a half a million and a $2 million budget shortfall for the two-year budget. So what I'm trying to emphasize here is that we we see that type of pattern. So this kind of news is not necessarily new. And it shouldn't be new to to council because we've provided, we've been providing that type of analysis for, at least since I've been here for a decade now. And it's in the charter to provide that that two-year budget. Prior to me coming here, there there might have been one or two years that that budget, that that forecast wasn't provided. But to my left is our controller, and I know when he was here, he provided that two-year look as well. And he can give you his perspective on what he saw too in the two-year period. So I thought it was a good analysis. It's not surprising, but the in in terms of the numbers, what I what I thought was good was just the, you know, the comment that we're in a good position from a state pers- state perspective. That's that's positive and refreshing. We kind of all know that from, we know that generally speaking, because, you know, we're here every single day and, you know, working, working in in city government. But the last piece that I want to, I want to also emphasize, as they talked about, you know, when they looked at the projections, it was they use words like status quo, baseline. That assumes per se that we're doing the same thing every single day. And as as the analogy was given, when you go to the doctor's office and you get news, hey, you're healthy, but you better watch yourself because if you don't, you're headed in the wrong direction. And I think this is the kind of news that that we have. We're healthy, but if we don't watch ourselves, we could be headed in the wrong direction. And and that's that's the main point is that, you know, the good news is, is that we have staff that comes every single day. And every single day, there's challenges and every single day, we adjust. So, you know, it it's not that we're coming here and just punching numbers and doing the exact same thing every single day. We're we're adjusting. We're constantly adjusting. And I think that in the second part of their their update that they're going to provide to council, and then as this, and and as the plan finalizes, you're going to, you're going to hear discussions on what can we do to improve? Like, like what efficiencies can we gain? Where where can we make up these deficits? We're going to start doing that now immediately, and we're we're already starting to focus on it. But these are the kinds of discussions that we're going to have, and we have to have them for the long term. And we we do know what they are generally, but it's good to have this program and PFM come in as a third party and explain it to council. And then you all can explain it, you know, to your constituents. So that's all I want to say, Mayor, as a, as some comments. So if you will, every audit gets a management response, or that was my response.
Thank you, Gordon. Anyone from city council have any questions? Chris?
So I want to look at the, I want to ask about the baseline projection. And I just want to make sure I'm reading this right.
Sure.
So this is the one that extends out for the next five years, I think it is.
Correct.
The way I'm reading that is our deficit over those periods is just predicted to be between $1 and $2 million.
In the baseline scenario, correct.
So roughly 2% to 4% of expenses.
Correct.
I'm also reading that the healthcare increase actually exceeds that.
Correct.
So if healthcare wasn't going up at the rate that you're expecting it to go up, we actually would be in the black.
That's correct. Yep, there are a couple of different, there are a couple of big variables that push things one way or the other. So one way, as you just said, is if health insurance costs grew at 5%, what are we assuming? I'm sorry. All right, so 8% is what we're assuming. If it grew at 5%, even just one year upfront, right? If it was 5, 8, 8, 8, 8, or if it was 5, 5, 5, 5, yes, that would bring your expenses down. It would almost naturally bring you into balance. The other side of that is, what's the assumption on the earned income tax growth?
Five in the out years.
Five in the out years? So if you come down to a more, I'll call it a more natural level where most of your Pennsylvania peers are, 3%, 3.5%, then that would have the the opposite effect.
Yeah, but that 5% growth rate is probably accurate, given.
It it is, it is now, yeah.
Yeah.
And is it three years from now? I actually hope it's a little low, but maybe.
I think it could be more.
Uh, it could be, right.
So what that means is that growth in revenues between EIT and all the other things that you identified is enough to cover the other increase in expenses like wages and things like that.
If not, if not, it it is enough in the first couple of years under this analysis and these assumptions and pretty close in the out years. So you were in a situation where this isn't like it was when I was in Williamsport two weeks ago and they have a $30 million budget and a $5 million hole, right? This is, this is a very different situation where you have this opportunity, where you are strong now and the and the future, if we're talking two years out, doesn't look so bad. And you can, and you can ask yourself a question that I know we've talked about with with Mr. Pintabone a bunch, which is, okay, when growth decelerates or what do we do, what do we do now? What, how do we think about the out years? How do we manage our risks? Because it, you know, the debt spending here, it's high as a percentage and it has a practical impact. Why, it's hard for the city of Easton to buy fire trucks when it should because they're really expensive. And if you had a little more flexibility in your debt, you might be able to borrow and stretch that out. But when you're effectively paying as much in your debt as you want to, and if not more, that becomes harder to do.
But the debt's only 10% of our budget.
That's a high percentage.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah. When you combine, you you want your, you generally want debt and pension combined and to be like sub 10.
Are other third-class cities like that?
Depends on which ones we're talking about. The healthier ones, some of them, the not healthier ones, no.
Yeah.
It kind of, it it's kind of the, uh, what's the bar you're shooting for sort of thing?
Okay, thank you. But but the bottom line is then, over the next five years, the revenue projections that are in place seem sufficient to carry the budget.
They do, it again, very, if it's like a $1 million deficit, but very close to it, yes.
Yeah. I mean, before I was a controller from '08 to '15, I was the finance director, it was my Mark's position.
Okay.
And when we did that two-year projection out, we usually had anywhere from a 1.5 to 3.5 million dollar budget deficit. That's just in the next year.
Right.
So if you're predicting in five years that the budget deficit's only going to be a million and a half dollars, I'll take that, that's pretty.
And if you go even farther back, PFM did this report 20 years ago, whatever it was.
2006.
Maybe you're even the finance director then, I don't know.
I was.
But those holes were very big and ugly.
And those are the holes that we fixed.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No. But thank you, this was a very good job.
Thank you.
Laura, nice job.
Thank you, Gordon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at the point in our budget, in our agenda where we have public comment on agenda items only. Artie? You have to come to those, Artie, can't hear. We, when the casino went into Bethlehem, we, I attended meetings to make sure that we were, as the county seat, were part of that revenue distribution. We don't get as much as Bethlehem, we don't get as much as Heller Town and Frehmsburg, because they're, even though they're smaller, they're contiguous. We do get a piece of it. That was 2008. We had no money. You're right. We agree.
Hi, Council, Dominic Trabassi, live on Fifth Street. Council members, myself and my peers are here once again to advocate for a community of people that remain under attack. And regardless of whether or not the resolution under 14A tonight gets passed, a move, mind you, that would signal solidarity to our vulnerable immigrant population, we will continue to show up with or without this council. Whenever we see injustices in the world, we will fight. In the event that our elected officials fail us, we will fight. So long as we live in an unjust world, we will fight. In the event that our elected officials fail us, we will fight. So long as we live in an unjust world, we will fight. I wish that I could be standing here on the cusp of a vote for a proper ordinance, but kicking the can down the road has led us to this resolution. Even still, we seek this act of solidarity from council to assure the city of Easton that this government is on the side of the people. Not the side of bending the knee or turning a blind eye to the alarming rise of fascism before us. Symbolic as a resolution may be, a symbol can be a powerful thing, and it's certainly better than silence. This isn't the final step, certainly not. This is just the start. We have a lot of work to do to slow the damage of this destructive federal administration. But the longer we normalize these governmental acts of violence and the longer we pretend there isn't anything we can do, the quicker our downfall will be. We ask you tonight to join us because there will always be more of us than there are of them. I'm asking you, Council, to vote yes on a resolution tonight that denounces illegal ICE activity in all its forms. The aversion of due process, the utilization of city services to assist in ICE raids. And the collection or recording of immigration statuses of Estonians. Please do not let us down. Thank you for your time tonight.
Anyone else like to address City Council on agenda items only?
Hello, Council, Mayor. My name is Luke. I live downtown. Neighbors, Council, thank you for hearing me speak once more on the topic of Easton. Uh formally becoming a welcoming city and adopting the resolution on the agenda tonight. While others can, will, and should share their support for specific lines of this resolution, I will happily advocate for the spirit of this resolution. Last time I stood here, I shared why I believe welcoming city protections are essential for our community. I spoke about my support for immigration, about how nearly all of our families come to this country from somewhere else. And about how no human being is illegal because alien is a word for beings that come from outer space, not for our neighbors. Tonight, I return to repeat these words with even more urgency. The decision to delay this resolution for another month has not been neutral. The month extended the stress, the fear, and the uncertainty that our law-abiding undocumented neighbors are living under every single day. Each day delayed keeps families on edge. Each postponement sends a message, even if unintentionally. That their safety, their dignity, and their peace of mind can wait. For them, it cannot. As I said before, our city runs in part due to the reliability and consistency of immigrant labor. I have lived, learned, and worked alongside immigrants of every background and documentation status. They are part of the fabric of this community and shame be upon us if we cast them aside or allow fear to govern their lives. To dispel any misunderstandings in the minds of some listening, in almost every case. Undocumented immigrants who are working in this country are net contributors to our tax system and pose no burden on public services. Because they are ineligible to access them. A twenty twenty four analysis by the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy estimates that undocumented immigrants paid about ninety six point seven. Billion in federal, state, and local taxes in twenty twenty two. And in another piece of misunderstanding, taking a firm welcoming city stance has never been about shielding criminals from justice. These policies originated because law enforcement recognized that when neighbors live in fear of deportation, they will not come forward as witnesses. They will not report crimes and real criminals go unpunished. Community safety depends on community trust and trust cannot grow in the shadow of deportation. As a smaller but also important mention, we cannot proceed without recognizing the importance of predictability and access in the civic process of Eastern City Hall. Working class people, including many immigrants, plan their lives around public schedules. When follow-ups to council matters are unclear or meetings shift without firm timelines, working people lose the chance to show up and to speak and participate. A democracy that wants to hear from its residents must make participation reliably possible. I said this before and I will say it again because it remains true, letting our immigrant neighbors live in fear is not who we are. It is not what the city stands for and the longer we postpone action, the more we allow that fear to persist. I ask you respectfully, firmly, to move forward, to vote, to choose dignity, safety, and compassion. And to choose them now. Others have moved more quickly to action on this than we have in the Commonwealth. Let us not be the last to do the right thing. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address City Council on agenda items?
My name is Ronald Johnson, Washington Street. Mister Mayor, members of council, fellow citizens. I stand before you this evening with a heart full of gratitude. At our last meeting, Mayor Panto offered a prayer that moved me deeply. He asked that we look out after the men of the Iron Workers Union. Who will be in Easton tomorrow to erect. Our peace candle, that was a quote from last meeting. Those words were not merely ceremonial. They recognize something profound. That the hands which build our community deserve our protection and our care. I come before you tonight, not in the tempest of controversy, but in the calm conviction. That Easton's character will be measured not by the passions of this moment, but by the enduring principles. We choose to uphold. The iron workers who raised our peace candle. Represent something larger than themselves. They represent a union built on a simple creed. That every worker who contributes their skill and sweat to building our nation. Deserves dignity, fair wages, and the protection of law. And among those workers are immigrants, our brothers and sisters who have won the same hard hats, climbed the same steel. And answered the same call to service. The Iron Workers Union stands firmly for immigrant workers. And has said that we, they oppose policies that revoke the legal status of workers who have contributed for decades to our communities. The I- Iron Workers Union states opposition to programs that undercut wages and safety standards. And advocates for the one hundred and fifty thousand skilled construction workers. Who are DACA and TPS recipients, who face deportation despite having completed certified apprenticeship apprenticeships. And served in leadership roles across our industry. This is not merely a union concern, it's an Easton concern. When skilled workers are deported, projects grind to a halt. When labor protections are weakened, wages fall and safety suffers for everyone. I ask you, what does it mean when we pray for the safety of iron workers one day? And remain silent about policies that would tear them from their families the next? Our peace candle cannot shine its light upon selective compassion. The truth is that immigrants make Easton stronger. They hold important roles in our unions and businesses. They contribute to our tax base, they raise their children in our schools. And they're woven into the very fabric of what makes this city great. The Iron Workers Union represents that Easton City Council. Take a reconsideration from what has been said. To consider a resolution supporting comprehensive immigration reform that protects working families. And recognizes the contributions of immigrant workers, specifically, we ask that you protect. And support protection for deferred action on childhood arrivals and temporary protective status recipients. Oppose programs that undercut wages and strengthen the rights of all workers regardless of national origin. This council has the power to add Easton's voice to a growing chorus of communities that refuse to remain silent. While working families are torn apart. This re- resolution will send a signal about who we are and what we stand for. The iron workers who erected the peace candle came from many backgrounds, potentially spoke different languages. Uh um and they worked side by side lifting something beautiful toward the sky. A symbol of unity in a divided city. Let us be our answer tonight. Let Easton be a city that stands with all its workers. Let us be a community where the light of justice burns as bright and steadily as the candle that watches over us all. Thank you for your time and service to the city we love.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address City Council on agenda items? Okay, move on. Consent agenda, Madam Clerk? Do all of them together?
Yep, I will. Hey, we have uh ten resolutions approving certificates of appropriateness for the following addresses. One hundred to ten, one ten North Third Street, one eighty five South Third Street. Four fifty to four fifty two North Hampton Street, one thirty seven South Fifth Street. One oh seven North Fifth, one oh seven North Second Street, ten to twelve Center Square. Lens Court at Center Square, five North Third Street, fifteen South Fifth Street. And one fifty eight to one sixty South Third Street.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved to the second and any discussion? Roll call.
Sure. Mister Brown?
Aye.
Mister Eddinger?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone? Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Sultana?
Aye.
Okay, reports received by council, there's no reports received by council. Uh let's move right into um reports of committees. Finance Committee, Police Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one thing on the agenda this evening and that's for the uh minion of the four fifteen uh pillars. Uh that we talked about last uh meeting. I also have on this evening discussion on the Nescafe on the street park uh renaming. I would like to ask Council for the opportunity to rename that part to Clarine Boyer. And Frances Ketchum Memorial. Uh two very strong um women in our community some time ago that was uh troubling. Uh I don't wanna go into too much detail, but I'm I'm sure all council members had already read it. Uh that is my recommendation for that part.
Well, Mister Brown, I think it's an excellent recommendation since I knew both of them. And uh I was gi- I would give it Carlton, I don't think will be back to work. He is been, I know his his uh house is up for sale. His car was sold already by his brothers to help pay for his um medical expenses. And um Francis was was a, she was on a school board when I was.
Yes.
When I was a teacher and she was excellent. And so is um Clarine Boyer. I went to school with all of her children. From Marvin to Maria to Teresa to Joey, so uh I knew all them and and I can't think of a better group of people to name this after. And unless it's named after Mister Houston, Mister Jones, who has a street name after him. And Larry Holmes, who has a drive name after him. So thank you for bringing that up. So anybody wanna introduce that? I'll make the motion to do that. Move to the second, any discussion? Roll call.
Um let's see, Mister Eddinger?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles?
Aye.
Miss Sultana?
Aye.
Mister Brown?
Aye.
Next item is economic development, Mister Pinnabone.
I don't have much, Mayor. Um the Department of Community and Economic Development has spent the last two weeks preparing.
Alright, we put you on the microphone while you speak, please. Um Planning and Coats Committee, Councilmember Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. Um we have two meetings coming up next week. The Easton zoning uh hearing board meeting on Monday, the first at six P M. And then also on Wednesday, the third at six thirty P M, the Easton Planning Commission meeting where we expect a final vote on the proposed Wood Avenue Warehouse project. Um yesterday's special zoning hearing for seventy four North Fourth Street, that proposal will be rescheduled for Thursday. December eighth eighteenth at six P M. Um at the last meeting, I asked for a presentation on the proposed contin- contin- contingency line item in next year's budget. Uh Mister Campos updated me today that it will be presented at the next budget meeting on December ninth. And that's all I have, thank you.
Doctor Ruggles, I'm I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you threw me off with your joke earlier. I forgot we have uh Police Chief Scouso here to discuss the.
We're gonna discuss that. We're gonna discuss under Mister Ruggles, Councilwoman Ruggles committee.
I did it.
Oh.
That's fine, I don't I don't care.
Um Councilman Ruggles, the uh Public Safety Committee, thank you.
Uh before you get up here, Chief, I I just wanted to uh inform Council that this week I have spoken to a person in. Or the department head of civil engineering at Lafayette. And uh we we were talking about LIDAR and that and he is very interested in working with the city. Um hopefully, the police department in uh implementing LIDAR. And and working with them to uh enhance our abilities uh in LIDAR. Uh they're going to be doing an indoor uh LIDAR of one of the buildings on Bushkill Drive uh next semester. And uh I I look forward to, it's kind of a, kind of a dream of mine, if you will. Of having a group of students working with the police department uh in that area. And and uh kind of sharing expertise back and forth. Um and uh so hopefully that will pan out um and that will be a a big benefit for the city.
Chief? I'll turn the meeting over to Mister Pinnabone.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let me turn my mic on. So under the budget, one of the amendments I made was to hire a a full-time police officer. We have listed that we should operate in sixty four, but with retirement and things, we've never gotten to sixty four. Um with the growth uh in the population, as well as the festivals, I think now's the time. To start adding that back, trying to get us to sixty four. And again, remember, we don't just hire today and then they're they're here. It's gonna take about a year to get a new police officer from. January when we pass the budget onto the streets, so we're thinking more for twenty seven. Uh Police uh Chief Scouso, the mayor wanted you to come to talk about. The need or not the need for a police officer and what your position was, so if you could um give us your thoughts. Opinions and and what you would do with that if another officer was uh hired.
Sure, uh first and foremost, I appreciate the uh the robust conversation that you had. I watched last week's meeting. Um just to hear some of the comments and to kind of um bring myself up to speed as to um what everybody was thinking in reference to the department. Um and I I actually, because of last week's meeting, the paper got ahold of, I guess, those comments and wanted some comments from me, which I'm sure everybody has read. Um and I stand by those as we continue to grow as a city, as uh more and more people live in our downtown area. Uh and they're intermingled with people coming down here for the entertainment aspect of the city. Uh the challenges for the police department uh become much greater. Uh we have a huge responsibility in keeping everybody, not only who lives here, but also who comes here safe. Um to that end, we are also extremely appreciative of the mayor and of of the administration for what we have as a department. Um you know, we work very closely with the departments in the surrounding areas and um and we want for nothing that keeps our officers safe. Whether it be training, whether it be a a brand new facility that we moved into in twenty seventeen, uh whether it be equipment. Um if we need it, uh we can make our argument for it and most times uh they make sure that we have exactly what we need. And so when it comes to the citizens and taxpayer dollars and things like that, uh we're very appreciative of what we have. And we're and we try to be very good stewards of the money that um that we do have to make sure that we are getting all the things that we need. So all that said, um the the, I guess, the issues that were brought up uh by Councilwoman um Rose. And by Councilman Pinnabone and the things that we see going on downtown, um those are accurate. Um we do definitely have issues where it comes to many, many people coming down here, spending long hours at the restaurants and bars. Um and those people do pour out onto the streets in the evening hours and um can be very noisy. Um many of those people have been drinking and things to that effect and so they do impact residents who live here in the city. Um also with people pouring into our city for um not only people living here, but but visiting. Uh the parking issues are very real as well, people parking, you know, close to corners and things like that, creating some some level of hazard, so. So it's something that's not new to us as a department. Again, that's what I mentioned to the paper, but it's not something that's new to us. It's something that we're constantly trying to identify and and change to make sure that we are meeting that responsibility, meeting the moment when it comes to whatever we're seeing in the downtown. So all that said, um I wouldn't be able to stand up here and say, and another officer for our department wouldn't help tackle those types of things. Uh Doctor Ruggles had mentioned, you wanna know exactly, you know. Uh, Doctor Ruggles had mentioned, you want to know exactly, you know, kind of how that's going to be used. And what we're currently working on for next year is, um, as we take this whole picture into, um, into account, um, we're looking at different initiatives, um, and ways that we're going to be addressing, um, our downtown area, but also our surrounding areas, um, to basically not only, um, put additional manpower towards those specific tasks, but maybe change some of the leadership structure and how, um, and how they're being supervised, to put more hands-on supervision, uh, to, to have a level of accountability for, um, those things that you spoke about, for the homeless, um, situation that we have. I don't think you'll find a more empathetic department dealing with our homeless population and how we're doing it. We have personal relationships with every person who's not necessarily transit here in the city, but the ones who are, um, more steadfast or are local to our area. Um, our officers have personal relationships with those individuals. Uh, we have our, um, community advocate, who has all the resources to, to reach out and try to get them for those individuals, uh, and help them get to a better place in their life. Um, and then the ones who don't want that help, we make sure that are following the rules, so they don't negatively impact the residents. So, this is a pretty long-winded answer to, um, to as we sit here, if the budget allows, if the, if the money can be identified, um, absolutely to get to a sixty-fourth officer. Not that we would get there, because in my entire time here, I don't know that we've ever been at sixty-three for, I would argue, twenty-six years. Yeah, I think it's been about maybe six months total time in the twenty-six years I've been here, that we've actually held that number. It's very challenging to do, but the sixty-fourth officer would allow us to hire up to it, which would again, um, increase that number by one. So, if we were only gonna have sixty, now maybe we have sixty-one or sixty-two.
Chief, this is a good question for you also. Getting to that number is great, but I think we also need to look at having someone on staff for mental health issues. When the officers go out and they get into a situation like that, they're not trained, they're training in a way that they're not, uh, don't have that equipment like our layers on right now to the community, is great. But we may need another one on staff too, or night shift or something like that, middle shift or whatever that can be.
Well, we, we actually...
And I was just gonna come to you and ask you, from our conversation, I didn't know. And I don't think, um, and with Mister Brown's question, I don't think any of us knew that we have a psychiatrist or psychologist that we deal with that comes out. Can you explain to that?
Yeah, so, so what happened, this goes back many, many years. Um, and so, the need for somebody who, who can deal with mental health crisis when, when we have them, obviously, police will show up first to make sure the, the scene is safe and, and try to identify exactly what we're dealing with. But in those instances where it's a mental health crisis, or somebody's in the throes of a mental health crisis, um, those instances are, are fewer and farther between. So, to have somebody sit on staff would be an expensive endeavor, obviously, to the city and to the taxpayers. So, what we did was, we have somebody on call who's available to us. They make themselves available, that we can call them day or night, they will come to the scene, they will work with us. If it's just a remote thing, you know, as far as, um, you know, what we should do, but they're a local psychologist here in, in the area. Um, and, um, and he's been absolutely phenomenal, and it's Doctor Terrence Brennan, I don't know if you know, he's, he's a local psychologist here in the city, and he is phenomenal. He has worked with our department, uh, for many, many years, my entire time as chief. Um, and he does a lot of services for the department and for the city. Um, and that's just one that he's offered to us that we've had for many years now, and he does a phenomenal job in that capacity.
Thank you for sharing that. That puts me in a little bit more comfort state.
Yeah, we, we certainly don't know how to, you know, there, there's things that we just can't handle, we don't have the expertise to handle. Um, but again, you know, the, the safety aspect of those situations, whether it be a barricaded subject, things like that, we deal with those things to make sure everybody's safe, and we try to control the scene. And then we, then we use those resources when we need them. And again, to have somebody that we're paying full-time to be on staff, there's probably not a need for that. But the way that we, we've done it, we've had, we've had him available to us, uh, he's very responsive. And like I said, we have a great relationship with him and does a really good job in that capacity.
Chief, uh, if you could do one more. I know Kristen Cooper, the victim advocate, is not a, a psychologist or psychiatrist.
Right.
However, as you mentioned, we pretty much have relationships with all the, the unhoused and, and, and individuals that, that stay here. Can you please explain, just one more time for the council and for the public, how Kristen and Officer Crossen meet these individuals, identify their needs, and try to connect them with services?
Sure. Well, I mean, the, the homeless crisis is a department-wide issue that we all, we're all involved in. Um, and then we have Officer Crossen, who's specific to the downtown area, and that's because many of them are homeless, um, congregating in this area. But, so, the way it works is basically between, um, the Patrol Division, Officer Crossen, um, they're, they're out, they're interacting, and they're identifying individuals who are in some sort of need of assistance, whether it be mental health, whether it be, um, and, and there's a homelessness component, but whether it be mental health, uh, potentially, um, you know, drug addiction, those types of things, um, it, it could just be something where it's, it's a situation where something has happened in their life, and they just lost the ability to, to be housed. And so, once we identify what the issues are, then we bring Kristen Cooper, uh, who's our community advocate. She then makes contact, and then she acts almost in that social, kind of, social work framework to bring those resources, uh, and gather those resources for those individuals. Um, and again, try to help them get into a better place in their life. So, whatever it is that they need, we get them those resources. Some individuals have family in other places that they just can't get to, we'll work to help get them there. Some people need, you know, whatever kind of treatment, we work to get them there. And so, but there are many who choose the lifestyle and, and don't want that help, they just, they just want to be left alone, which is fine, but then we explain to them what the rules are here in the city to make sure that they coexist with the citizens and the, and the visitors to the city without creating, uh, some negative adversarial kind of relationship, um, that, you know, that's, you know, that's not good for anybody, so. And, uh, and then we work to make sure they're following those rules. We've been pretty successful in it, but to, to, um, again, to the conversations last meeting, um, I think there's probably more of a need into the evening hours as, as, you know, we have more events and we have more people down here. Uh, but not just in the downtown area, we have events on the south side and west ward as well. So, the thought as far as our, our, our structural attack on an, on an issue like this would be to not only have, um, more resources, uh, downtown for, for what, you know, Officer Crosson's doing, but also to engage in those other things, live at the falls, or if they have, you know, the, the festivals up on, by Cottingham, things like that, where we could have some sort of presence to make sure, um, that we're trying to alleviate the issues that we're seeing down here. And, um, we, you know, we're always pivoting, we're always changing as a department. Um, and I think that's what makes us so successful, and this is no different. I think that this is happening very quickly, and so, um, the one thing I can assure everyone sitting here on council and future council people is that we're aware of it, uh, we're working on coming up with a plan to kind of navigate through it. And, um, and we'll keep you kind of posted as we do that. But as far as the officer goes, it's, it's kind of one of those things, like I said, we're very, we're very, um, respected. We're very, we respect very much the, the money or the taxpayer dollars. So, if the budget can afford it, um, I would never stand up here and say, we certainly couldn't use that extra allocation. Um, we always work with the administration as we do our hiring and where the budget falls. But, um, but to that end, what we're planning to do, that sixty-fourth officer could, could certainly come in.
Chief, thank you so much. First of all, thank you so much for coming out and addressing this. Um, honestly, I have not heard anything different today. Uh, like, if everything has been generalized, why we need a sixty-fourth police officer? Okay, talking about Kristen Cooper, of course, we hired her like two, three years ago, and I would honor it, and I would always support, um, hiring more community advocates. Uh, so that's, that's not a problem. I wish we have more community advocates. Again, talking about, uh, what Councilwoman Crystal Lewis mentioned, and Councilwoman Frank Pinnabone mentioned, the, the, the incidents in downtown, these are mental health issues. Okay, these are not, excuse me, excuse me. Uh, these are mental health issues for me, because a woman, a lady in the trash can, and, you know, and, 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 and a person, you know, driving down and throwing racial slurs, I understand. But sometime, we need, we need to put all those things, not, not, basically not labeling everything as a crime just because some people are homeless, some people are like dealing with mental health, these are not the crime. They need, uh, different services, right, not a police officer to deal with. If you are planning on hiring, uh, a community advocate, because I know Krista Cooper is doing a wonderful job, and I have been working with her, and I actually did talk to somebody just today, um, a lady who's been serving homeless people, and I told her, you need to reach out to Krista Cooper to find out, uh, the right path for our, 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 our uncharted community, uh, to be at, like, in shelters or, or, since she's, she's been very helpful. But anyway, the point is, I have not heard anything different. Why do we need sixty-fourth police officer? Because as Mayor mentioned, and you have mentioned before, like, crime rates are going down.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I mean, I can use the example of, of a woman, uh, who had a mental crisis down here. It was our officer who found, our officers are out on patrol, our officer's the one who found her there. Um, I was actually on scene on that specific incident as well. It was our officers who actually got her out of that garbage can and helped her to get herself over to a place where we could sit and talk. We then utilized, uh, Ms. Cooper to come and deal with her, and we actually did get her the mental health treatment that she needed. Um, so, I, I think you underestimate, and, and again, I know there's this, this belief that police, um, shouldn't be doing non-police things, but the, the reality, whether it be fortunate or unfortunate, is law enforcement in, in this country, um, is called upon to do so many more things than most people even can realize. Um, that woman was found by us, and so, whether or not we had social, uh, we had, uh, mental health workers here in the department or not, she was found by us, and it was us who got her out, and it was us who got her to a stable location, it was us who made her feel safe. It was us who ultimately got her the mental health treatment that she needed. Um, and we did that and are still working with her as well. So, I understand.
I mean, I respect that, honestly, I understand, yeah.
So, again, those, those are the issues that we deal with on a regular basis. But when you start to limit to that, to say, okay, we're not gonna get another officer, or we're gonna do, or however you wanted to look at, um, the mental health, dealing with those things, the issues that we're dealing with here in the city are, are, are much more vast when it comes to things like noise complaints, quality of life issues, parking issues, those types of things. Um, and so, this just falls into the, to the numerous responsibilities that we have as police. And so, I, I don't, I don't discount the need for, and, and I believe me, mental health is definitely a very, very hot topic with, with what we deal with and, and what we're seeing out there in our community today, more than in my entire career. It is a very real thing, but it doesn't change. And again, the thought that a mental health professional is going to show up at a, at a residence where there's a mental health crisis, especially if it's violent, is just not a realistic approach, because it takes somebody who's trained to not only deal with that mental health crisis in a way that's gonna keep everybody safe, but has the tools and has the, the, the way to handle themselves that they can control if it gets violent. Because I know the big push is for mental health to kind of go and take these calls. And that's only gonna work until one of them gets really hurt, somebody gets very hurt, very injured or worse. And then all of a sudden, it's gonna be like, okay, back to the police going there first. EMS won't even go into a scene until the police are secure and make sure everybody's safe and calm. So, it's always gonna be our responsibility at that first level. So, the question shouldn't be what's happening at the first level, the question should always be, where does it finish? And that's really what we focus on. So, we find somebody in that mental health crisis situation, we, we get, we deal with it, and we want to get her to the finish line of where she can get the most help she could possibly get, so that she never ends up back there again.
I think your team does a great job, and I, I just want to bring back that, I, that was not the only thing that I touched on in our last meeting. I spoke about quality of life issues as well, that are, you know, unfortunately, with the staffing, an extra officer will be able to help, um, address some of those issues. Um, I don't, I, I actually have, you know, I, living downtown, being on foot a lot, I have called things in. I'm also on the block watch, so people have asked me to call in, um, different situations. And I have witnessed the police handling things really well, and I, I really commend them for their community-focused policing. We don't have the problems in the city that you hear about, the, the horror stories that you hear about somewhere in other parts of the country. Um, I, I think that as the population grows, I don't want to keep going on and on, but as the population grows, both our residents, and we also have a growing unhoused population, that we do need more feet on the ground, and we need, um, so, yes, maybe we will need another advocate at some point, but, uh, especially with retirement spending and things like that, we need to make sure we're hiring enough people to address the needs of our community.
So, coming back to your point, uh, Chief, um, quality of life issues.
Yes.
I think it's important to look into quality life issues, because we are lacking the resources. And I know it's not just Eastern, it's everywhere, we're lacking the resources. Homelessness is increasing, right, social services have been cut, right? Uh, we are in housing crisis. So, it's important that if we find, uh, money from the budget, to utilize that money into right place. And for me, right place would be putting that money for housing, providing mental health services, providing, I don't know what else we could do, but, but actually the real quality life issues. Because, again, I mentioned this before, and I don't want anybody to twist around those words. Take proactive action, not reactive. And proactive doesn't mean hiring a police officer a year ahead, okay? Proactive mean making sure we have resources. If people are moving into our city and the population is growing, let's provide them better resources. Instead of providing another police officer, you know, who's standing, and I understand, and I'm not underestimating the work that the police department is doing, I'm not just in favor of, uh, you know, increasing a police force just because our population is growing. There are needs in this community, there are, we are lacking the resources, and I think this is where the money should go. And again, I'm, I'm not underestimating your work, but, but there are many other real things to do, the real quality of life issues.
And, and I don't feel like you're doing that. I, I don't, I don't disagree that you and council have, have very tough decisions to make when it comes to where money gets spent within the city. I'm making an, uh, basically the argument for the department to say, I think it would be unrealistic, and I think, um, Councilman Pinnabone has, has stated this pretty eloquently, is that it's unrealistic to think that we can keep growing the way we are without increasing some of the public safety, um, resources that we currently have in place. Just because, again, it, it's, it's very different, it, the, the nature or the number of calls are different, but the expectations of what people are gonna find when they come to this city are also very, very different. Um, when, when you are, when you have so many residents that are moving downhill and paying the prices they're paying for the properties that they have down here, the expectation is that they're not gonna walk out onto the streets and have just, you know, all kinds of, you know...
I just want to make the point that in two thousand eight and nine, we hired eleven additional police officers. We went from fifty-two to sixty-three, and we budgeted for sixty-four. So, we're not talking about an additional police officer, we're talking about fulfilling the budget.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, and that's, and, right, we're, we're, we've been at sixty-three.
That Mister Pinnabone wants to add a police officer, we've already budgeted for that police officer.
And, and that's, that's... That's my, uh, uh, the wrong terminology. We have budgeted, budgeted for sixty-four, we've just never gotten there.
Well...
And, and even...
That's a, that's just operational.
Understood.
I mean, that's the same thing as fire department.
I mean, we, understood, but, but don't we want to try to get to the level that the council before us, I think you were here at the time, Mister Brown and Mister Mayor Pantel, you for some reason have the wisdom to get us to sixty-four. So, or to make us want to be at sixty-four. That was in two thousand and eight.
My, my concern, my concern is the, the, the vicious crimes that we have to deal with, our police department has to deal with, will never overshadow the quality of life crimes. So, your parking is not gonna be any different with sixty-four, sixty-three. Your parking on the corners is still gonna happen in the neighborhoods. And we all know what happens when I sell the police officers to tell you, enforce that, it's the neighbors who call me, because that's where they park.
Uh, the, the sixty-four, there's some confusion, so we're a sixty-three man department, we upped it to sixty-four, I want to say two years ago, in a temporary, because we had officers who had, they had scheduled retirements, so we were allowed to go to sixty-four for that period of time to try to hire officers, knowing they were gonna leave, so that we would end up back at sixty-three. So, we do have the sixty-fourth, um, in ordinance right now, but that's how that sixty-four, so sixty-three was back in oh eight. Sixty-four is where we're at now, only on that basis of allowing to hire to that level because of those.
Here's the, here's the thing that always, uh, reminds me, growth is a wonderful thing. We all love growth, but we gotta be ready for it too. And here we are, the two biggest things in Eastern we have is parking. And I think we kind of worked that around, we just gotta get it out further to people. Uh, and quality of life issues, you know, things are same. Um, we're very fortunate to have the accreditation that we have for a small city, with big city problems sometimes. But I, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Pinnable, when he says that we gotta be proactive than reactive with the numbers of residents coming into our city. We're not gonna get smaller, we're gonna get larger, so we have to look at that.
And Chief, if, if, if I, if I may, I'm sorry. But to Councilwoman Sultana's point, she, she, she's right, we do have to provide housing and, and for everybody, every, uh, income, uh, level. And Councilwoman, we're doing that. Um, the R D A has a plan for twenty-six, uh, in twenty-six, for twenty-two units. We just sold the one on Cooper, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting in the next couple of weeks to, uh, first-time low-to-moderate-income homeowner who rented in the city. Um, I'm meeting with Shiloh every week, we sit and meet, we were in Harrisburg with P H F A, we're going for one more round of funding. They're building a hundred units in the south side, half market, I'm sorry, half workforce housing, half low income. They're breaking ground in December on seven townhomes that are gonna go to low-to-moderate income. They're breaking ground in December on seven townhomes that are gonna go to low to moderate income, first time home buyer. Fifty-two units due to the help of the mayor in the city um of income-based housing was built three years ago. Or four years ago in south side, we are attacking those needs, we are actively going after those needs. And we heard from the chief what Christian Cooper does, identifying, getting these people help, so we're we're attacking that, we're doing that. But we're increasing the population significantly, we're at what, thirty-one five now, um we'll be at thirty-two. When the when the when the council was comes in and some other other things, south side, you need to make sure that. We are securing and making sure people are safe when they're in our city. Mayor, you've always told me since I got here, this is my budget, if you guys want something, find the money. I found the money, also.
You didn't find the money, you found the money by raising.
It was where?
The real estate transfer tax.
No, not at all, absolutely not, mayor, the real estate transfer tax is one hundred percent going to open space, it's through the parking. Which we also, my recommendation also was to lower the parking garage to two twenty-five an hour. Additionally, my proposal is to hire a full-time parking enforcement officer that would take care of the parking issue, but nobody's. Nobody had an issue with that, so that's why we're not discussing it, but it's a revenue agent.
You just heard PFM tell you that the you can't keep adding people, if I would love to have a hundred men and women on the police force. I would like to see them back to beat walking and walk to beat, but you can't afford it.
Agreed, and that's why we're not doing ten, and as PFM just said, you guys are doing one or two here, one two there, that's specifically what he said, and that's what I'm doing now. We've cut position, not we, the council has cut positions in the finance department and we're lacking on services and not bringing in revenue. Or following our basic rules that we have set forth, because they don't have enough people, because we cut them to balance budgets. We have to start bringing these people back, and I'm not talking about high numbers, but we have to provide services that people want. That are moving here and we're not doing that currently.
I I'll just close by saying first and foremost, we appreciate all that you you have done and the administration has done for our department. And regardless of the decisions that are made, um we will be working on the issues that were brought up at the last meeting. Uh and coming up with a solution and uh we'll continue to touch base with you as we kinda implement those things and try to try to figure out a way to make uh. To make all of those things better for everybody involved, so.
Thank you, chief.
I appreciate all your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh just for one more clarification, not to you, chief, I'm sorry, thank you, just for clarification, the D transfer tax and I sent emails out to everybody.
Yeah, the open space.
Hundred percent to open space, nothing for anything else.
It's um, are are you planning on introducing it?
It's already part of the amendment that I made a couple of weeks ago, so Louis, can you explain to the councilwoman how you plan on bringing it back?
Counsel, every year when we go through the budget process, in the last meeting, um after we go through all the deliberation. Uh Mark and I will present to you a report of all the changes.
All the changes, all the amendments, proposed changes.
Of the proposed changes.
Proposed changes.
So Mr. Pinnabone um has been working with the administration on his numbers. And his proposals, which will be presented as part of the overall changes, I mean, we're not complete yet, there's some other tweaks that. You know, Mark and I, as we listen, we make some adjustments and we'll be proposing potentially some 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 changes as well. And but that's, it it's not deviating from any other year, the way in which we've managed this process.
No, what I'm saying, I received an email from uh Councilman Franklin Abon and I read that was the amendment. I just wanted to make sure it's already amended, or are you planning on introducing it and then the council will?
So it would be part of, if we vote on it at the end, it'll be part of the budget, so the increase. So to December twenty-second, so that increase will be part of the budget and then it'll show that that revenue will go to line item one-ten. Whatever line item is for open space, it'll show in the budget that we pass.
It won't happen until December twenty-second.
Yeah, I just a quick question on that.
So.
Just for clarity for myself.
Yes.
The way that works, if I'm wrong, correct me, the way that works is that uh first time home buyer buys a home. Why are you paying a percentage they gotta come up with, so are we asking them to come up with another?
Half a percent.
Yes.
I'm gonna defer, I'm gonna defer to Councilman Pinnabone.
So at the closing, they pay a D transfer fee, currently it's two percent, one percent goes to the state, one percent gets split with us in the school district. We're proposing a half a percent according to the realtors, that half a percent on the average home price for sale in the city of Eastern. Will be eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to the buyer, eight hundred and seventy-five to the seller. Now, what you've heard is that hurts first time low to moderate income home buyers, so I did my research and what's hurting. The low to moderate first time home buyers in the city of Eastern are LLCs. As you saw from my report, from November of twenty-five to Nov- November of twenty-four to November of twenty-five, four hundred and eighty homes were sold in the city. Out of that four hundred and eighty, thirty-three point three percent or a hundred and fifty were sold to LLCs. Out of that hundred and fifty, ninety-one percent were in the south side and westward. The issue is the LLCs are purchasing all the lower income units.
Got you.
And raising the prices, so that's where the issue is.
I got you.
Additionally, I'm sorry.
It looked, if you look at it, just by Hap and Sat and you go through it, you don't see the LLCs.
Right, so what I did, what I had to do was go to the courthouse and I and I can bring all a hundred and twenty pages in and make copies, just so every, I want everybody to see it, but. You go to the courthouse, you go to the D to records, you pull it, I went through a hundred and twenty pages. And it shows everybody that bought it, it shows the neighborhood, so I have them highlighted differently. But one thing in particular, I send that email and and for the public that I think is is huge to note, because we're the largest in the in the entire region. Ninety-nine point one four percent of all the properties in the city of Eastern are within a quarter mile of a park. A trail or protected space, so this plan to put into open space will protect what we have, enhance what we have. And going forward, protect more, so we're not faced with a million square foot warehouse coming in.
So you say thirty-three percent, um.
Thirty-three point three.
Thirty-three point three percent are are the LLC that buying the homes, right?
Thirty-three, yeah.
And seventy-seven percent, the rest of the percentage is any, can be anyone, first time home buyer, right?
Downtown or college U.
If 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 I may make one observation as far as real estate goes, um when we talk about this percentage of LLCs buying homes. Um, let's roll the clock back thirty years, it it I don't know, we using the word LLC, but thirty years ago. It was Mr. AP, the the question is, are they buying it as investors? Or flippers or whatever, but that always existed, the LLC is just a new form of ownership, not a new form, it's an old form. If you're seeing a lot, the the observation you should be making is that it looks like there's a lot of investors out there. Are they good or bad, the term LLC is no different than than i- if I had bought with a partner back in nineteen eighty-five. Investment property, so it.
But but I think to your point, um and 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 we can use it however, however you wanna use it, whatever term, when we say LLC, you and your partner bought it. As an LLC.
No, we bought it as general partners and those days they didn't have an LLC.
Oh right, as general partners, as a business venture.
That's right.
Okay, so I think that's how the majority of us view LLCs, it's a business venture, it's not a family or an individual moving into the neighborhood.
So surprised, I've seen people who think, who think that they could put their own name, their own personal home in an LLC and somehow will protect them. You know, it doesn't take much to form an LLC, it doesn't, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not a key word. I think the conversation is 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 better advanced in saying that these are, we're identifying that there is a rise of investment properties. Versus homeownership, uh and and whatever you do with the transfer tax, it's a different thing, but. One question I have, because I've received inquiries from the Board of Realtors and I don't know how to answer it. Um, if this is not in our, if this is not part of the proposed budget now, when will, is it, is it, is it on the? Is it on the website? The I I, the question that I have to answer people, they want to know when they could read it. Because right now, they're not aware that there is a transfer tax proposal formally.
It will, it will not, it will not be until it's uh we we formally introduce the final budget on December twenty-second. But Mr. Pinnabone is the only council member that has been uh very open about, you know, the changes that he wants. And I think at every council, uh every council meeting, he's been making this announcement, but but Joel, it it nothing has changed.
So 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 but.
And and Joe, just to, just to Louis's point, I also took the invitation and I went by myself to the Realtors Association. And sat with all of them and had the discussion.
I I'm not talking about the merits, I just, I what I, my biggest concern is such a public understands. Is it that the budget will go on the agenda twenty-four hours ahead of time?
Yes.
And whatever anybody's looking at the budget right now, do not rely on that. This entire budget could change three hundred and sixty degrees in twenty-four hours.
Yes.
Correct, that's what the budget hearings are for.
That's, well, that budget hearings with normal, I mean, I would think budget, budget hearings what you'd hear about, so the public should just understand. That come December twenty-first, your taxes could go up uh by a percent. No one knows anything, if there's ever a meeting to go to, it's gonna be that budget meeting, because you don't have, it's not on the website.
Joel, just just for clarity, um and Mr. Solicitor, um this is the process that we have, whether it's good or bad. You just brought up a really good point and uh in in the last ten years that I've been here. Um, most of the changes have been extremely nominal, like very nominal, less. Less, less, the less than a tenth of a percent, there were tweaks, right, there are rounding errors. In this particular case, there 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 is a proposal on the table to um increase a tax. So you will not see that until council can actually take action and vote and that will. Will be on the twenty-second and it will be posted publicly on twenty-four hours, at least twenty-four hours beforehand. We have the practice of putting that up the Friday before the Wednesday meeting.
And just so, and just so everybody, again, the public is alert that based on the Supreme Court decision. That was issued, I think, yesterday or the day before, it appears that uh after all, you can, if you get a four-three, if you get a majority vote. Of the quorum, you could amend it on the night of the meeting, so uh um it's it's. It's just a matter of deciding, you you decide what is good practice and 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 that's gonna be.
The only thing I'm concerned about, and I noticed that nothing to do with you, Joel, is the fact that, I'm glad we put this information in these mics. The fact that a first time homeowner is already struggling to put that money up front. And then we tell them that, hey, wait a minute, you have to pay another eight hundred.
Eight hundred seventy-five dollar, yeah, that's my concern, that's exactly my concern, because we are already in housing crisis. Okay, and I understand thirty-three percent are the one LLC is buying all the houses, like, but they are working people. Why are we putting a burden for working people on another eight hundred seventy-five dollars and they don't even know what's going on and understand this is the process that we are following. But if public is not aware of ahead of time, how can they make their voice heard, how can they come and, you know, attend the budget meetings until it's not? I mean, it's 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 the biggest concern and I understand, again, you know, this is the process we have been following, I think it should be in the public and people should know that. We are working on raising the uh raising basically uh due transfer taxes. Um, and are, we are putting eight hundred seventy-five dollars bu- burden on working people for for home, for first time home, home buyers, basically.
Who have no idea they're paying it, because it doesn't, it shows up when they're hugged one, they don't know what a hugged one is.
Well, I I just wanna jump into.
Explain what they're paying, but just for clarity, I've I've publicly brought it up here at the last three meetings. I met with the Realtor Association and I did a live video last night publicly on social media. Where it was over four thousand views um discussing the transfer tax, so I'm putting it out there, I've never done anything uh uh behind the scenes. I do everything publicly and through committees as we're supposed to, so we're getting it out there, um.
There is a thirty thousand of the population in the city of Houston, so is there any way, Mr. Campos, if you can.
Thirty-one five.
Put it on website or do some kind of like special budget hearing, no?
No, 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 however, however, I do wanna say this, the ca- council, um you do have formal budget meetings that were advertised. So what I would do is pause this conversation and continue to have them during your budget deliberations.
Nineteen.
Because that's what's fair, because that's what you've advertised, I've asked, I've asked Ms. Rose in all fairness. To to um move a discussion until a budget date, that wasn't the primary reason, but that was a reason. To move a discussion, because that, those are the dates that the public quote unquote is focused on listening to these budget deliberations. So someone in the public may not be listening tonight, because about budget issues, because they feel, they may think that this is not a budget. Night to talk about these issues, so that's all I'm, that's all I'm gonna bring there up.
That's good, that's good. I suggest we put the amendment on the agenda on December ninth to talk about it. And anything that Mr. Pinnabone wants to recommend and try to get passed by this council should be talked about on December ninth.
That's a good idea.
Well, and technically, just so you know, Mr. Pinnabone can submit something. To the administration on the twenty-second and and we will present it as part of the budget.
But these are things that he's talked about for three times, but we haven't, there's, we don't even know there's a consensus.
No, I I understand, I'm neutral, mayor, I'm just getting your information.
I know.
I agree to put it on the ninth.
Okay, um public safety we went through, um. There's also discussion on immigration resolution uh under public safety, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Soltana.
No, Mrs. Mrs. Ruggles.
Dr. Ruggles. I'm willing to hear any comments from council.
I I have one thing that I wanted to add, I'm sorry, my allergies are upping, I'm sorry, bear with me. Um, getting that cleared in in this week, um, so I attended a municipal conference last week. And um it got me thinking about our resolution and there are some language I'd like to add. In regards to um supporting legal pathways, um and eventual citizenship tied to the workforce. Um, the work I do outside of council, I've been hearing from business owners, hospitals, elder care facilities, restaurants. Agricultural industry and the trades that they're experiencing real workforce gaps.
Yes.
I think everybody is here is aware of that, so as I said, I'd like to add language that supports legal immigration pathways. And eventual citizenship that helps reflect those needs and aligns the resolution with what's happening across our region and the country. Um, as we know, and some people had stated earlier today too, when people are able to work legally, they contribute through taxes, they help stabilize and support our local economy. Positive ways, so I'm working with the National Immigration Forum in DC. Um, they're a bipartisan national organization um to make sure we have accurate data and clear, well-crafted language to add to the resolution. Um, with the holiday week, I would hope to have that to everyone by next week, which I know would delay the vote, I'm not trying to postpone it, but it's something I really had some. Thoughtful discussions with elected officials um at different levels last week when I was at the NJ League of Municipalities Convention. Um, and it's something that I think that there's support for, so as we hope to take this resolution. And encourage our elected officials at higher levels of government to actually do something. Um, about the issues that we're having, um I I think it would be helpful to include that language, so that's that's my request for tonight.
I if if this is just to include the language, then I can propose it, you can propose it now and we can vote on it.
Well, as I said, that I'm working with the forum to pull the accurate data and as well as some language that's been used elsewhere. So I should have that to everyone prior to the next meeting to include in the resolution draft, if everyone's willing to um do so.
But data isn't necessary, because this is just a resolution, this is not an ordinance.
Well, that's what I would like to add to it, I think that part of the reason why we uh sent this to committee was so that. We could all participate and add our pieces to it, so um that that's just my request for tonight and I'm hoping everyone would be willing to um. Work with me on that.
I would, I would request to move on with this resolution, pass this resolution tonight and we can amend this later if it needs to be done.
I'm not interested in amending it, I'd like us to be able to send this out to pe- to our higher levels of government and um. You know, hope that it has more teeth.
Yeah, I think the appropriate time for the discussion here will be when the motion's made for the resolution second and then. You could have a request to table, but that's uh that's really the point that you take action.
Mr. Ruggles.
Are we still discussing?
Yes.
Two things that I that I wanna make sure are added, um I know we we brought it back to to discuss today. Um, was the fact that we don't agree with with our residents being taken uh without warrants, which is happening. Uh, often, or I think pretty much all the time, I haven't heard of any warrantless uh. ICE incidents and also the fact that, you know, I don't think we, any of us agree uh with individuals having their due process. Just being trampled on and and, you know, uh uh just not being adhered to, so. I wanna make sure that's in there, I haven't seen an updated one unless we're using the same one from before, um.
No changes.
So tho- those two things have to be on here and.
It's, I I think the due process is in there, that that language is in there.
Due process is in there.
It's it's in there, it's, yeah.
The the two things that you.
And and that was, yeah, and that's been there like since day one, like when Dr. Ruggles introduced the first one.
Let me just point out, um, I I and and we can discuss this when we, when it's moved, but um. Basically, the bare bones of this resol-
Basically the bare bones of this resolution. This council's already passed. I mean it this is nothing new we passed this back in twenty seventeen. Um and and you know if you're talking about us being a welcoming city twenty seventeen we passed this resolution essentially. There's a few tweaks here and there basically bring it up. Bring it up to some of those issues that we have today but this resolution was passed back in twenty seventeen. It's not that we haven't done anything we have and I think just this is just a point. I think if we put it off for a week to make sure that the language in there is correct I don't have any problem with that. I I don't want to come back and amend something I want to put something forward that is the actual resolution that we're passing.
But why didn't we do it because we tabled the resolution to fix the language and why didn't nobody introduce the language or they wanted to switch or change or fix. I mean it it's it came after a month it was it was tabled for two weeks but it came back after four weeks. And.
Well, because we did not agree on what was the final draft and that's why we're here right now. We we put it into committee so that everyone can add to it and I apologize that I didn't have this sooner but it was something that came up. In the last two weeks with some of the conversations that I had and I think it's timely right now. So I would just appreciate everyone's openness to it you know. And at the end of the day we should want to have a final draft that everyone um has contributed to and feels good about.
I've I have just a question for the council with the exception of Councilwoman Rose's um additions. It it does anybody have any issues or comments regarding Councilwoman Soltana's version? Let's knock that out today while we're here. Everybody's okay with that part? I I I mean I we should ask because if we're gonna if if Councilwoman Rose is asking to table it to bring her language then. You know we'll hear her language in two weeks but if there's issues other issues with it now then then we should discuss it now. Instead of waiting and then bringing that back so I think if if I'm okay with hearing with 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 other members said in here with um. Crystal brings because I think identifying the fact that we need better pathways to citizenship is 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 very important.
Absolutely.
But in the meantime if there's things with Councilwoman's current uh 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 resolution. That are issues or changes I think it should it should be discussed now or additions.
I think we all I'm gonna say that um I think most of us have talked about this and agreed to the point. Uh so far we wanted to make sure that it was a clean uh resolution going forward and with the new information coming forth now. Um I think it's a good idea that if we're gonna do it let's do it clean let's do it right and move forward. We all in an agreement would you counsel woman we just want to add add Chris uh Ms. Rose's uh portion to it.
I I would recommend Mr. uh Councilwoman Rose to uh add. Like introduce the amendment now and we can vote on it.
She doesn't have the information.
I I promise to have it to you by next week I'm waiting to hear back it's a holiday week so I'm sure I won't hear back from them until early next week. I have some language that I sent over but I'm it's not finalized yet. This is something I just started working on we're still I mean we said we were bringing this to committee this week. So that so I I I was a little confused to see it on the docket for voting today because we said we and I understand we're combining two meetings so. Understandable but that's that's what these committee meetings are for is to. Hash it out and go through drafts and get to a final version that everyone feels comfortable voting on hopefully.
I would I would like the administration also to review and um and be part of uh the negotiation process. Um as you all know the charter outlines so therefore I do agree um with Ms. Rose that. It it in the proper procedure it should go through committee and we should discuss it and that doesn't mean that it just starts at committee. It means exactly what she says that she's starting to work on it now so by the time it goes to committee.
You introduced an ordinance previously.
No, the the process is and I and that's and I'm and I am also um cliff noting if you will my comments. So meaning she's coming to a resolution to a committee meeting prepared. Meaning she has already uh done the work not only working with third parties. But has worked with the administration sat down with myself and any member of the administration this pertains to the solicitor. And also has gotten feedback from council members so by the time it goes to committee you're really presenting it to the public a almost final draft. And and I do I do appreciate that that's the way it 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 should operate. It it should that's proper that is the proper government that's the way it's 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 supposed to be designed.
Outlining the charter.
I agree with you.
Mr. Campos today it it's a committee meeting too today you know that right? Because I reached out to Karen to discuss the committee it the resolution the committee meeting. And as mayor and also mentioned the committee meeting everything would be.
Tonight.
Mention would be tonight so that's why it was listed under Dr. Ruggles name so we can discuss before we vote on it so it's kind of committee meeting. So we are following that right right procedure.
I would I would say that part of that is correct. The other part is that the administration has not received the draft so while the topic is being introduced. The administration right now.
A draft I'm sorry.
A draft of the document that Ms. Rose just 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 proposed.
That was on purpose.
It was not on how dare you accuse me of that.
Because this is this has been at the table for many months and we've been discussing it. And as one of the speaker actually said like we are keep postponing it and it's hurting our community so. So it's not about Mister uh uh about any council member it's not about me it's not about you Louis it's not about anybody else. It's about the vulnerable communities that are being hurt in our community and this is the bare minimum. It's not an ordinance it's nothing it's a bare minimum we can do just pass a resolution it's a statement telling the community. We stand with you in solidarity simple is that it's 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 nothing else.
Councilwoman if if Councilwoman if if. Passed it yeah it's 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 a resolution that first one has been asked in twenty seventeen. We're adding to it. And we're just adding to it to bring it up to date with some of the issues that are here today and I think what we're talking about here that. Councilperson Rose is is mentioning and it was something that was brought to her attention as I understand it relatively recently. We just want to make sure that those issues are actually addressed. Councilwoman Pettibone addressed two of them we we went that way I think something that has come up I think. It doesn't hurt to wait two weeks to uh uh get those in there and make sure that this resolution. Does address the things that are current today. Councilwoman if if I Councilwoman Soltana if if I may. I you've brought you've brought ordinances I don't think you've ever gotten a motion to e uh a second to even move forward for a vote resolutions. You've never gotten a second to move forward and what I'm hearing tonight is you uh I I wait a minute please. What I'm hearing tonight is there's if if people are in agreement with what you're what you're doing nobody is saying no nobody's trying to fight it but. It should be more there should be more and Councilwoman Rose wants to add more you have two more meetings apart of this council and she's saying she's gonna bring it back for a vote. Like nobody's here is fighting you on it like you've been fought on it nobody's fighting nobody's saying no.
It's it's not on me it's not on me that I get couldn't get the second on the ordinance it's on all of you. So it's 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 on the council it's not on me to not getting a second.
Okay, let me say it again the council has not gotten a second in the past right now they're. Oh pretty much in agreement with you like they're agreeing with you but they want to add more.
Then let's pass it if.
But it but she wants to add more to it which we are what we talked about and Roger Ruggles talked about Councilman Ruggles about adding. The language of if 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 this is being sent out to Councilman Ruggles how many places do you have it being sent to? How many places do you have this being sent to besides the state congresspeople or the congresspeople and the ma- president who else? I think there are like twelve.
Yeah twelve yeah.
So so but if 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 our point is we don't agree with this and we want the government to.
Twenty two.
Make easier faster pathways to citizenship and we're sending this out that should be included in it.
Yeah that should be and that's what I said like we can I propose it now instead of post keep postponing it like and I know it's not gonna work because I'm the.
Oh you're not you're not you're not let me just say it slow and pathologically. We are agreeing with you. This has been passed in two thousand seventeen we want to make sure that it's up to date. Councilwoman Rose have found out more information to put towards us to make sure. That everything we want in there is there we are agreeing with you there's no fight here we're agreeing.
And I agree and I agree what I'm asking not to postpone it and stand in solidarity. With the vulnerable community and Mr. Ken Brown you actually at the last min- minute not last meeting. Wanted to pass the resolution that was already passed in twenty seventeen with no amendments.
No, that's not true.
Excuse me let me finish let me finish the resolution is here because. All the council members said they will support the resolution but not the ordinance that's exactly why. It was being requested to Dr. Ruggles to make a little bit amendment and bring it back the resolution. And now it's been at the table for for many weeks and it's being. It's been keep postponing it and I know I I if you all are agree and say yes. This resolution is the exactly thing you would vote on it right besides councilwoman uh what Councilwoman Rose wanted to add it. Okay, I'm okay with that but but what if you come again next in next two weeks and bring another. Like another thing to add or remove it then that would be there would be another two weeks another two weeks. That that's my concern.
If we pass this this evening and Councilwoman Rose have more information we would have to amend it why go through that? And just put it all in one shot.
So the resolution that we have out already right? With 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 me amending it right do you guys have and anyone of you have any problem with the language?
So you're asking the person I just asked. Dr. Ruggles Dr. Ruggles has the floor. I I I think one of the things that. It is not realized here is that the design of this resolution originally back in twenty seventeen. Is to spread this throughout the country.
Yes.
Spread this idea throughout the country and when this resolution was passed back in twenty seventeen. It was mailed out twenty two different city councils around the country. To invite them to adopt a not a resolution like this.
And I respect that yeah.
Them to send it out to twenty two more. So it just keeps growing and growing and growing okay? If we don't have something that is the final. What we want as a final product. And then we're going to pass that and then send it out and say oh wait 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 just a minute we amended that. And we're gonna we're gonna send it out again with this amendment it it's it doesn't make sense okay it makes sense if we. Have a document that we send out. And that document is our final document I I would be very much against. Passing something with the intention of amending it into the future because that is not what we're that's not what this thing is designed for. It's not designed that way. So I don't see putting it off for two weeks is going to be a big deal myself.
Just to clear no it's not it's not until uh un- unless we are yes passing it. I I'm just worried because after two weeks I don't want other council members to to say something different and postpone it for another two weeks that's my problem. It that's the concern not what.
Excuse me Mrs. Soltana this I will entertain a motion to table till specific day December ninth. And it must be voted on at December ninth.
Until we get to it on the agenda it really it really isn't time to vote on this.
We're gonna talk in circles.
Well, then I suggest you stop this part of the uh 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 of the discussion and move on on the agenda. Cause I can't be here all night before I give my big report.
You have a big one too. No report. No, it's not your turn yet. Public works Mr. Councilman Eniger.
Thank you mayor I have no report tonight I do however have. Uh seven resolutions and a bill number eighty one that I'll be moving.
Okay administration Councilman Soltana.
Thank you mayor uh mayor we had a executive session and I will leave that for Mr. Campos or uh Mr. Shear to report it. Uh also there are six resolution on the agenda of contracting with the city of Houston coming from the administration to be approved. Uh the last thing is I attended the annual tree lighting uh put together by Southside Civic Association and Eastern Fire Department. It was well attended uh council member Brown was there um so I just want to thank everyone uh. Doing this for the community that's all I have mayor.
Thank you reporter solicitor Mr. Shear.
Oh uh thank you um we had a uh executive session uh yesterday no that was a few hours ago it seemed like yesterday. Um dealing with uh with a property issue and uh that's the extent of my report.
You're hot mess. Reporter the mayor I just want to recommend uh just update city council leave collection will continue. Uh street cleaning ends on December first thirty one firefighter interviews were held. Uh which was really good and once those scores are finalized the civil service board will adopt a um uh uh list. And we'll be able to hire the the vacancies that exist uh the candle lighting is a Saturday. On Friday is the first Christmas tree lighting and that will be directed from the circle down to the first Christmas tree. Down by the Larry Holmes statue um. Boy can't read my own writing no don't forget the football game oh football games on Thursday I won't forget that. Um Louis and I were at a meeting this morning with the Lafayette president and her staff. And uh I think it was a good meeting and we got a commitment for some dollars uh some matching funds. And just so you know the Freedom Software Mark why don't you update the city council on Freedom Software? Okay okay uh the Hooper House uh we're looking to start that fundraising effort uh soon. Uh we're working with the architect to to provide a wrap around the house so you'll see what it looks like. And free parking starts this weekend in down down East on Fridays Saturdays and Sundays and I'm gonna amend that resolution. That takes out the three hours we're just gonna have free parking in the garages in the two garages. Mayor just a question uh for the uh the village coming this weekend right? It officially opened the twelve o'clock Saturday.
Twelve o'clock on Saturday.
It's not gonna be a ribbon cutting or anything just gonna open.
No there'll be a the opening ceremony.
Okay twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock.
Oh yeah pun pass kick was held last night it was very good turnout both bands were there from Phillipsburg and Houston. Uh we didn't win Pberg won the pass button kick competition between the two cities. But we did have a lot of second place people so they practiced this year they'll win the first place next year. But it was very you know very well.
We had the better band.
We had the better band without a doubt. Okay um correspondence is no correspondence we'll go right into new business oh Mr. Campos.
The only report uh the only item on the report that I want to give is that uh. Uh negotiations with AFSMI um are ongoing we met today and. We're we're gonna be continuing to meet in earnest again and actually as early as next weekend. I think we're starting to make some progress so more progress I would say we've been we've been making progress but um. Things are going and I think we're meeting and we're having good discussions thank you.
All right mayor quick question I'm sorry I didn't bring this up earlier on hold on. Starting to get like you. You've been like old. I have a question um I I didn't see and I apologize I I I looked through the pack I didn't see it. Mayor for letter K who's your appointee to the Housing Authority Board? Mr. Campos. Oh okay. Mr. Campos the um Housing Authority Director who did not get along with the city has resigned. Is our opportunity to put somebody on that board that will.
He resigned.
Friday. Oh my goodness. But 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 his last day is uh December fifth.
Yeah.
But 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 his office says he's not back in the office till December fifth. I don't know.
Well, he's taking early leave.
But thank you mayor I didn't see that I mean he wouldn't Louis wouldn't be my first pick but we'll take. Louis is a is a city resident and uh. He'll be a good representative uh to try to get that Housing Authority back in order because right now they think they are on their own. Very good.
We have to we have to get I asked the mayor I jumped in resident obviously is one of the requirements but the. The second thing is is that we need we need. We need tighter communications with the administration with here in City Hall and and what's going on at the Housing Authority, so. That's why I raised my hand and uh and and volunteered to uh to get on this board, I thought it was important for the city.
I I agree, and and per the conversation I had with the mayor last week when we heard about this. I think now's a good time for the city administration to get involved, especially with the hiring and the new person and and have that better. Communication is similar to like what Pittston does with their Housing Authority and their RDA.
All of them do it, pretty much, he's the only one.
Gary Smith was. Okay, new business, Madam Clerk.
Uh bill number eighty, an ordinance amending chapter four fifteen peddling, soliciting and special events.
Move the second discussion, this is an ordinance that will help us recoup or make money in our special events. Um we're charging each vendor fifty dollars and I think that's. Uh we made money on both the garlic festival and bacon festival, but this will en- ensure. That on some of the smaller events, we we also break even or make money, we're not looking to make money, but if we do, that's great. It increases our revenue. Roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone. Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye. New business.
Thank you, um we have a resolution supporting, oh no, we tabled that, didn't we?
We have to move it first and then.
Have to move it first.
Uh resolution supporting and protecting immigrant communities.
So move.
And seconded.
Second.
Uh move the table that.
Second till date specific December.
I got, we got ten to me, right?
Well, we'll bring it on the night. Vote on the ten.
Vote on it, vote on the table.
Okay, Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
And Mayor Panto.
Aye.
A resolution renaming Nesca Hunning Park to the Clarine Boyer and Francis Ketchen.
Memorial.
Memorial Park. Wait, I'm sorry, so who made the motion? Okay.
I seconded.
Frank, okay.
We'll have a sign, okay.
Ca- excuse me. Uh Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between D and L and the city of Easton. To repair a section of the D and L trail.
So moved. Second.
Is that the one right underneath the uh overpass, the Black Bridge? Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
A resolution introduced by Mister Eddinger approving a contract with Holland Company Inc. for sodium bisulfite. Chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved. Second, move the second discussion, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
A resolution introduced by Mister Eddinger approving a contract with Premier Magnesia LLC. For magnesium hydroxide chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved. Second, move the second discussion, roll call.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
A resolution introduced by Mister Eddinger approving a contract with J C. J C I Jones Chemicals for sodium hy- hypo chloride. Uh for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved. Second, move the second discussion, roll call.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
A resolution introduced by Mister Eddinger approving a contract with Polydine Inc. For polymer centrifuge chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
A resolution introduced by Mister Eddinger. Approving a contract with Polydine Inc. for polymer gravity belt thickener chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved. Second, move the second discussion, roll call.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
A resolution introduced by Mister Eddinger approving a contract with Univar Solutions USA LLC. For ferrochloride chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved. Second, move the second discussion, roll call.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Miss Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
A resolution um introduced by Mayor Panto. Approving free daily parking in the North Fourth Street and South Third Street garages.
Motion.
This was originally scheduled to be a three hour daily parking and we're gonna make it free parking like we have in the past.
Second, move the second in, roll call.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
A resolution introduced by Mayor Panto approving an appointment to the authorities, boards and commissions for the Housing Authority.
So moved. Double second, move the second discussion. Roll call.
Miss Sultana.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.
Mister Eddinger.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Pinnabone.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Public comment is next.
Go ahead.
No, we're, I'm finished, public comment.
Uh public comment on on any item concerning the city of. Oh introduction of bills, bill number eighty one.
I can miss that. Okay. Bill number eighty one introduced, um an ordinance amending attachment two of chapter five fifteen streets and sidewalks.
So introduced.
Is there a second? Alright. Anyone would like to address city council?
I I.
One forty fourth Church Street in Easton, I just wanna say I think it's a wonderful idea.
Can you speak into the microphone, Artie, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure, uh sorry, I think it's a great idea to connect the city council to the Housing Authority. In nineteen sixty one or sixty two, we had a tremendous arguments with the Redevelopment Authority. Because they were only giving a hundred dollars to the people who live right in this area to move out of the house. They were totally inept in realizing how much it would cost a person to move, and this was fifty years ago, you know? So I think it's great that you're connecting, I really appreciate your taking the responsibility, Louis, so join in.
Thank you, Artie.
Thank you.
Luke.
Thank you again, Councilman Mayor, I'll try to keep this brief as I know we all probably wanna get home. Um I do think that it is uh incredibly disappointing that we weren't able to move forward on a yes vote for the welcoming city resolution tonight. Um I think one comment really stood out to me um by Doctor Ruggles. I don't see the big deal in waiting two weeks, um yes, cause I assume you are a documented citizen. And so that it wouldn't lead to a big deal for you specifically, we're talking about our undocumented neighbors here. Um to move a little bit forward uh off that subject, uh though I don't think we should have tonight. Um there was another quote from Mister Pinnabone on affordable housing, we are doing it already. Yet everyone this evening was willing to admit that unhoused populations are growing, I don't see how those two things can relate. Uh the budget the budget presentation ended on a warning, if you were listening close enough to hear it. It ended stating that we earn fast and that we also spend fast. That having good management going forward would be ensuring that we have a sustainable growth plan to ensure that we will survive rainy days. That after the final luxury building goes up, there needs to be a plan to continue and maintain prosperity for this city. That there is a limit to the quote, different population, as the gentleman put it. There is a limit on how much they can lift us up, a limit to the land space available for their luxury units. And that all suggests an inevitable end to the growth we've seen lately, but I'll tell you the answer to that. Uh to that concern is ensuring the working class can afford to stay. Otherwise, this city will only be affordable to transplants from other places and will no longer be for the Easton Red Rovers who have always called this place home. Remember, that ensuring the working class can afford to live here ensures that small businesses remain busy throughout the week, not just on the weekends. It is incumbent on city council, planning and zoning, not to hammer the nails into wood. But to incentivize and encourage affordable housing through policy. I hear about all of this fast growth, but where is the sustainable growth? Where is the support for working class Estonians today to avoid pricing them out of the only place they've known as home? We are discussing policing homelessness rather than preventing it. I speak from a place of more experience than I care to admit, and I will undoubtedly speak on this subject here in this room again. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Luke.
Okay, move to adjourn. Go ahead, turn your microphone on.
The next budget meeting where we're gonna put my addendum amendments, what date?
The ninth and the tenth.
But I'm bringing mine on the night, the but the budget hearing will be the ninth. Okay, and and lastly, can I, at the end of the meeting, can I borrow you and Louis for three minutes, please? Thank you.
I need it for one.
Maybe three.
Hey Barry. I mean Warren.
Warren.
Warren. Alright, made it. Move the second discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Doctor Ruggles.
Aye.
Mayor Panto.
Aye.
Mister Brown.
Aye.